I've got a date to get off the road.
You look better than you did last time.
I do look stronger.
I didn't want to say anything about how you looked last time.
Ask my dad.
It's like being sometimes I people watching something, came over, sit in my lap and sat there for a minute and he just hopped out and went back over and said, Mary was laughing. She said, why don't you want to sit on Poppy's lap? I said, Poppy didn't smell adorable. All right, you know, I guess that's the way. The fact that you smell it.
Oh, they do.
All right, it's seven o'clock right now according to that clock. Called me to order. DeWilde?
Here.
Chisman?
Here.
Thompson? Absent. Howe?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
I'm going to start putting the names on there. Donna contacted me, I don't know, six thirty, I guess, six forty or twenty, that someone in her circle has died and she needs to be with the family more than she needs to be here, so I said, that's okay, we understand. Let me put my phone on, vibrate here. Sorry about that. Okay. The consent agenda. So the public questions were brought up. The card services, six ninety-seven oh five for postage and the fee for Sam. Postage was when we overnighted a package of material to the lawyer for the finalization of the CDBG loan. We had to get that to them by ten o'clock in the next morning. And then the other part is that the fee for Sam, it's a government thing, we talked about it last year. If you're going to get any federal money, any grant money, you have to have this number from them. And they're a clearinghouse, so to speak, but if you apply for any kind of grants, you have to have it. So it was five hundred ninety-nine dollars, so that's what that, that's what those two things are for. The Dorsey Whitney, that was for their part in doing the bonds and the paperwork for the loan and all those other things. And I didn't see, I guess, the Waplo County Auditor, that was for our special election, which I think you need to buy. We won't talk about that now, sorry. Anybody, any other questions? Yes?
On this, about the roofs, is there any recapture on some insurance coming back?
No, that's one of the same thing. We did get, received other checks, I think there was just like, I want to say just a tad bit over three thousand dollars that we have had to pay that we haven't got reimbursed for yet, but we did receive other checks. She sent another packet, which I'll give to you.
She's working on it.
Yeah, yeah. So I just sent what I already had, I just went in and paid them off, so.
So we might recoup some.
Right, right. Which majority of this, the eight thousand was already paid because they had sent checks to us. I think it was just, just a little over three thousand, I think, is what the difference was that they haven't sent yet.
I'm moving to the conservative.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All those who think you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, four ayes, one absent. All right. Mayor's report. It's not a French render paper, I'm not going to lie to you today. Excuse me just a minute.
You need one?
No, well, I got one, but I couldn't, I set it right here. My mayor's report, I knew I had it with me, I'm going to blame it on James. I've been asked more than one time about the Christmas decorations that hang on our telephone poles. We used to have six, then we had four, now we have, only have two that even tentatively work. And for the last, I know, three years that I know of, we paid somebody from the tunnel to come out with a check picker to hang those up and then come back later and take them down and charge us three hundred dollars. It doesn't seem to me to be feasible to pay that much money to have, and I can't admit it, her husband's going to do it, but he's at this point in time, people just keep having problems on the road, he can't be there. But we're going to look into next year, maybe getting purchasing some more, because since we had five holes that had the hook up, we noticed that we had five pieces of decoration. But they will not be up on the holes this year. And it's not because we had no Christmas spirit, it's just because we don't have enough that worked and it's not. I did purchase some decorations for the park, if you always do. That one sign in the middle says Merry Christmas, you can't read it through the road, but if you go closer, that's what it says.
But it looks nice.
Well, I'm going to donate those to the city and keep track of them, so, yeah, but that's why there aren't any up there. And this is from a couple of months ago, and I forgot to say it last month, and someone had brought up the fact that we should look into getting some work release prisoners from the jail in town to do some of our street work, you know, some of those things. I talked with, had a long meeting with Mr. Melwesher and all that, and basically said, it comes down to the fact that they just don't do that. He said, we have a couple of prisoners, sometimes we let them work around the building here, but he said, if we sent prisoner, someone out to your place, your city, we'd have to assign a deputy to take them out there, he'd have to be with them all day, and then he'd have to bring them back, and then we would have to charge you for his time, so we might get the work done for you, and said, and we just don't have the staff and we just don't have anybody to do that. So that's not a possibility. As far as community service from the courthouse, I have not got a chance yet to talk to the clerk there to find out if that's a possibility, but that, that's a whole different ballgame than using prisoners on work release. So, and we'll wait till spring, we have some of the things, maybe look into that, getting some of that done. The fire department and what's going on, I think I talked with Heather today and she asked me for a couple of things, and she's working on the legal part, the paperwork, what has to be done as far as that go. Talking to League of Cities and with the state as far as everything that needs to be done to make that work. So that's still in the process, it's not going to happen by January first this year, which was sort of the target date, but it will happen. And then.
Did it give you a target date?
She did. Hopefully by next month, we'll be able to put something in, at least have an idea where we're on, and we'll set a public hearing and then we'll go from, go from there. So if that happens, I'm guessing that we probably would might vote on it in the February maybe, but I'm not thinking anything, there's not going to be any votes taken before that. But, so that's what I've been talking with Heather today, that's sort of the idea, the timeline that I kind of got. The audit we gave, I took another packet of, I'll just stick to, to Michael, and then we've got some other things on my desk now to take to him as far as trying to get this completed. It's just some, some little stuff that he thinks he needs, and so we're trying to, he could come out and look for it, but we charge for the hours, so that's why we're trying to do as much of what we can by ourselves. But that's where we are, but it is going to get taken care of, he said, and in the future, so just wanted to give you an update on that. I can't, is there anything else I should talk about? All right, that's, that's my report to the city, okay? All right, moving right along. We need to set a public hearing for proposed great stabilization structure, that's the Lagoon Road. I've got something in packets of an abbreviated, I got the whole thing here. But basically what they're going to do is, to summarize, they're going to, yeah, over there by Jeff Johnson's, between Jeff Johnson and the church, you know, where the Lagoon Road goes down and makes that right-hand turn and makes a left-hand turn, there's that piece of property, they're going to take some dirt from the roadside of that and grade it down and put on the other side and use it to fill in, so things are put in a thirty-inch pipe, right? Now, I think we're on there now about eighteen or something, and so they're going to, and then we'll put it in a.
A vertical drop.
Vertical drop, so we can capture more water before it runs across the road. I don't know whether you've been down there, but like these range we've had, it's.
There's very little water running down the road right now.
Pardon?
I said, there's very little water running down that road right now.
No, there was before, there's more, and it's, there's some pretty big ruts, Dave keeps kind of trying to fill them in, but what they're going, they're going to put some large gravel, they're going to make the road about five feet wider.
On the curve.
On the curve, just the curve, pardon, and they're going to bring that out and put some gravel under there and then another type of gravel on top of it, try to get the water to wash down into that ditch before it goes across the road, because.
He just replaced that culvert two years ago and it's washing out loud again.
Washing out, so we're going to.
It's just constant.
The money for that project is coming from when the state, when we borrow money, the state says, well, since you borrowed it, you're going to have a little extra, there's another whole fund that they're, so that money, that whatever our amount, the loan was, a certain percent of that, we can use for another project. We wanted to, we started to do the cemetery, if you remember, we talked about that, doing the cemetery ditch, and that was going to be much more money, since we didn't borrow that, we got less money, and so we were not going to be even able to come close to doing that. So this is a project which is needed, which we can do, which is a grant that we don't have to pay back, so it's money that we don't need as far as that goes. I know that.
In addition to the cost for the cemetery, they were awfully concerned about hitting some graves or something there that were unmarked.
Yeah, they wanted to say have a archaeology.
Archaeologist stand.
Down there standing there, that knew what was going on, and that was going to be the biggest expense of the project.
So if they find dinosaur bones, are we able to keep the, like the royalties from that?
But, so that's why, that's what this project is coming from, it's not, we've already talked about it and we've already approved it, it's just that it's, I think, did you put out the bids recently or you're going?
No, that, you're just starting that process.
So we're going to have a public hearing next month, talk about that, what we're doing and as far as where that goes. And I have the, all the drawings here, if anybody wants to look at them, they'll be in the office here.
Do we have a lease on this property?
Okay, the property, that means nearby the church?
This, on this property here that we're doing this on.
Okay, the, okay, the church has a ninety-nine-year lease and we pay a dollar a year for, and they are leasing that property to turn in for parking. The reason it hasn't been done is because of the expense, and so I talked with church, and we were going to have to buy dirt, find dirt from someplace to fill this in. So the plan now is, is that they're going to take the dirt from that property and put it down there and grade it so that the church could turn into a parking lot, and it won't cost the church anything and it won't cost the city anything, it'd be the less because we don't have to find how many yards, get how many yards of dirt it was.
It's not a huge one.
It's not a huge one, but we're going to have to go someplace and either buy it or someone donate. Well, this way, we can get it right there, it'll last time, it's a lot easier, and it helps out the city and it helps out the church, both of them, so that's, that's what that is.
The project we were showing you that I talked to, yeah, last week or week before Bill, included grading that whole parking lot.
Right.
Dean R kind of threw a fit about that because this is our extra money that you're getting is for erosion control features and not for grading the parking lot. So we had to cut that back a little bit, so it grades as much as the parking lot as you can get done, that's for taking that dirt that's needed for the other side of the road, but not going any further.
But, so. We would be able to park on it.
I think you'll be able to park on it, yes.
But it's just, yeah, so it's.
It's not quite as, quite as much as they would like.
Trying to win-win draw for both of us as far as that goes. That answer your question?
You know as well as I do, I go to church here and I love that church, but I just got a real problem with spending city grant money on something that we're not going to use.
We're not going to use?
The city itself, not going to use.
Well, we had to maintain the road, I thought in the beginning.
And the road is one thing, parking lots another.
I guess the point is, is if we don't get the dirt from there, then we're going to have to pay and go someplace else and get it.
It'd cost more to do it some other place, and it wouldn't be to use that dirt.
So that was the thinking, is that, you know, that it would benefit the project because it's right there and to benefit the church at the same time. And for most part, I mean, the Lagoon Road, most of us don't use it, it's just.
Any erosion control you can get over the years, it needs, because that was very overlooked by the city just because the funding wasn't there and land wasn't there to fill in there.
Does that make sense, Bill? That, it's not doing any, no extra money being put into it for the parking lot.
It's just that, yeah, the city's going to have to either buy dirt from someplace else and not haul it in.
Right.
Or if we could just take it from right there, that would make it easier for us and for everybody involved. I talked to Jeff Johnson about it, and he didn't seem to have any problem with it. He said, you know, it's the least they can do whatever they want to with it. I first initially asked him if, you know, there's not any really any other place that's halfway level enough that we could get dirt from that, for that, right there, it would have to go.
Oh, you'd be hauling from out of town or something.
Yeah, so, so that's, it's kind of a, a good, it's a good thing for both of us, I believe, as far as that goes. Any other questions about that? We'll have the, this is here available, someone wants to say, this is draft one, so you're going to give me draft two?
I just gave a tour of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Draft two will be here and you can look at that as far as that goes.
So it's just a little bit different than in your packet, right? You'd have to, you'd have to study to find the difference.
That's right, we need to set the meeting, I, I want to set, I would entertain a motion to make the, set the meeting for a public hearing at seven o'clock on February.
February, January?
Pardon?
February or January?
February, the next February, January meeting, I'm sorry.
Kent, about what degree of is this slope here? Do you have any idea?
Slope, this one where they park on, or that's linear?
Right.
That's a four to one, it could be twenty-five percent slope. So you can't park on that.
Well, I know that.
But it's, you can mow that with mower, that's what you're getting at.
I thought I was wondering.
Yeah, you can.
That and about erosion, because right now it's not, it don't have.
Eleven, what is that?
What does that makes it count?
Well, it might take a little bit to get that seeded, you're right, it could develop some rills down through there and take a couple of tires to get that patched up and get that grass.
We talked about, I know that you.
Yeah, I talked about.
Good point. Grumbling it, you know, right away or something, which would.
Well, a big rock would be.
Yes, whatever.
If you get so bad.
But the big rock goes right in the ditch bottom, down at the bottom of that slope. So, because it's running longitudinal, so you've got water coming down and then it turns and goes down that way. The bigger rock goes, is in that ditch.
Okay, so the meeting for February the eleventh at seven PM? January the eleventh, seven PM.
Don't ruin my life, I can't keep up now.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, but someone might have to make a motion to that, that phase before I pass.
I'll make a motion, we hold a public hearing on January eleventh at seven PM for the Lagoon Project.
Proposed water stability improvement.
Excuse me.
Great stabilization structure.
Water, can be, water what?
Proposed water quality improvements and great stabilization.
Okay, water quality improvements and great stabilization, I can read that part.
Second by Larry Howell, motion made by Sandy DeWilde, all those in favor, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign, four ayes, one absent, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the policy concerning credit cards. We have, we have a credit card, and then the fire department has a credit card, it's Blakesburg Fire Department, the city of Blakesburg, so. One of the things in the audit that would be asked, do you have a policy concerning the use of the credit cards? And if so, then if not, if so, give to me, if not, you need to get one. So this is what, I don't hope you had a chance to read this from me in the day, it's not, we ask for help from a number of other cities and basically they, we got, what, five of them, from cities, some of them are our size, some were a little bit bigger, but they all said about the same thing, so I'm guessing somebody got it from the state someplace. But you can look through here, that, through here, only authorized employees, the city of Blakesburg are using municipal credit cards, includes the mayor, the city clerk, the officer, the fire department. Pursued the following, when we, when you can't send a check or cash or whatever, like sometimes when we, another thing here, employee training, you register for that usually, it's odd times they put that on the credit card. No liquor spends, expense can be included in your lodging accommodations. Online purchases, emergency items, emergency vehicle maintenance, something happened, one of our city vehicles had to be taken care of. Received documents, we sent it to the clerk, the employee issued the card, you're responsible, in other words, you're given the card, you go to town and get something responsible for it until it gets back to make sure it's not stolen. Can't be used for cash advances, personal use or any other type of purchase not permitted by the city of Blakesburg, a misuse, a failure by the employee may result in disciplinary action or even possible employment termination. Administrator of the policy is the city clerk, which is set by law, and she'll be responsible for the issuance of the retrieval of assigned credit cards, city clerk is responsible for recorded accounting and payment. All documentation must accompany invoices. The third page is for each person who will be able to use the credit card, is to acknowledge that they've received the policies and that they understand the agreement and will buy it for when they may sign it and the city clerk signs it. So, anybody have any questions about that?
When I first saw it on the agenda, I thought we were going to call for a machine for people in the water. I was like, oh, well, that makes more sense.
We do have, there is, I know that they use it, Ray uses it for his business out there, that you don't have to pay anything to get climbed up with, you have to place up online, you can go online and you can accept credit cards and they charge you the four percent that the bank normally charges you.
Might swear, I suppose.
It's different than that, but it's similar to that, so that's something we may want to look into. Anybody have any other questions about the policy? I think the policy now is, we don't really have one. Please, now we have a guy.
I told you we had a policy.
I couldn't find it.
I think we did. I don't know where it's at.
Well, we didn't see it.
It was similar to this.
Was, okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we put this credit card policy in place.
We're going to do it by resolution, so.
Oh, I see, resolution, okay.
Resolution twelve dot fourteen dot fifteen is the resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution twelve dot fourteen dot fifteen for the credit card policy to put in place.
Foster.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, and we have four ayes, one absent, roll calls, DeWilde?
Here. Aye. Get it wrong every time.
Chisman?
Aye.
Howe?
Hi.
Mitchell?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Thompson? Absent.
You're going to have to hold up a card, so I can have one to say.
That's all right, okay, so we'll, we'll just take them care of, all right? Okay, moving right along, adopt a designated physician for the city. When the IWF, whatever, ACA, until I get a workman's comp insurance through, came through and they did a thing, and there were a couple of things that he thought, we need to put a chain over at the van stand, so we got a chain that says no trespassing, it won't keep anybody out that wants to get up there, but at least it's, it's there, so we're not allowed to. Also, a couple of other things, there's a seatbelt policy and in our, included in our employment manual that we passed almost a year ago or last spring, there is a section there about the seatbelt, so that's not. The other thing he asked is that, well, it didn't have. We need to designate, adopt and implement a designated physician policy. Now, we don't have the policy in front of us, it says there's a place where we can get what their model policy is. But we talked about it and I believe, so we're going to table the vote on this, but bring you up to date. We're going to designate the Monroe County Clinic in Alvia as the first place, so if someone is injured on the job, is a workman comp claim here, they're going to go there first. Now, after that, they may wrestle the insurance company and go to another doctor, but that will be the first place. Number of reasons for that, but I think that, we talked to some people that, I know that, that we, Marilyn and I, we, our doctors there, I've seen a number of other people from Blakesburg there when we were there. And I know that's where Dave's doctor is, and so we're going to, that will be what we're going to designate, the policy, we don't have it yet, we'll have it for the next meeting, but I wanted to let you know this, so we need to, I need the motion, we table this until the January meeting.
I'll make the motion that we table.
Okay, so second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Someone second, you get that?
Everyone's starting to get that right.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign, four ayes, one absent, motion carries. We have a work session for the budget, we really wanted to schedule it before Christmas, but Ted Nelson, who does all that at the state, I saw something, wanted to email to one of the other clerks who had asked that he didn't have it ready, wasn't going to have it ready until probably, I think they said the seventeenth of the eighteenth or something like that, which, by that time, you know, we might as well wait to sometime in January. So I'd like to, does anyone have their calendar on them? I have, someone go out there.
Oh, I've got calendars now. They're French render calendars.
Right at the top is the whole month.
Oh, all right, okay, so January, we're having our meeting on the eleventh, right? What, let's pick a day and the week before that, that we could start work on that, is, I'm thinking, Monday or Tuesday, schedule work session, somebody give me a.
You're saying the week prior to the eleventh?
Yes, yes.
It'll be the fourth through the eighth?
Fourth through the eighth.
I can't do Thursday night.
Okay, so it won't be Thursday.
So Monday or Tuesday is fine after the.
So we, if we set it for seven o'clock on Tuesday, seven o'clock on, let's say, we'll go Tuesday, January fifth? Okay?
At seven?
At seven o'clock, and by that time, we should be able to print off the forms and stuff and go from there, get some started on that, please. All right, here you go, thank you. I left mine at home. Dave was really glad to get his, because he didn't get one last year, he had to go to town and buy one. I, I think it was just, he got overlooked, but he, okay. Okay, I guess let's make a motion, someone make a motion to set the meeting for January fifth at seven PM for the work on the budget.
I'll make a motion to set the meeting for work session, budget, meeting, work study, whatever you want to call it, January fifth at seven PM, I can't talk tonight, I should just give up.
For a second?
Foster.
All right, all those, second by, by Howe, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign, motion carries, four ayes, one absent. All right, any old businesses you could think of?
Would ash trees be considered old business?
Well, they've been here a long time.
Fortunately, nobody was injured, but I've had one that's declining, a big one down there, and the top was out there, I suppose so big a top, and, so I'm thinking between now and spring, we need to think, well, we're going to. What do we do with that or what the deck and.
I know that there's one down there next to my house, that huge thing that's got so many, I mean, it has to be hollow inside, but branches blow off all the trees around it, it just stays. Yeah, that's probably something we probably want to look at, getting closer to spring, you know, after, wait till after the days start getting longer, the twenty-first of December, but figure out what we're going to do or find somebody can tell us what the best thing to do for the trees that are in, along the right of way. Any other old business?
What about the drainage, I know the letter was going to be.
Yeah, and I looked at that again today.
I need to get in the part of my yard, my equipment trailer's sitting underwater.
Is that underwater on our property or yours now?
It's underwater.
That's something you need to make a note, we need to figure out, abandon the alley that runs through Larry's garage, destroyed building there, I mean, it's, so.
We didn't know there was an alleyway there.
No, nobody did until paperwork got done, it's like, oh, so we need to get that, we need to figure out what to do about that and how we can do that, I know that there's a process, but that kind of involved in that. But yeah, so we need to, as far as the drainage, I know that I had written a letter and I talked with a couple of people and I, we can't do what I said we were going to do, but we can do something, and so I'm going to, probably the first of the year, send out something that. But those people who do not have culverts and actually have to have them, then we need to, those are the ones who need to address first. The ones that have crushed culverts, then we can address the second, but I know that poultry no longer, this, this whole area looks like my backyard, I tend to get to my driveway to the house, I'm going to have to get a ferry to go across there.
Well, I know we've had a lot of rain here lately, but if we had a two. Well, I know we've had a lot of rain here lately, but if we had a tube across that one property just to the east of us, I don't think we'd be having a problem.
Probably not, you wouldn't, you shouldn't be having as many problems that you're having.
I got a cave out there, it's got this much water in it.
The one next door to that one also, and he doesn't have a culvert either, and so if we had enough, we'd come work on there.
My cave out there, got that much water in it, it's never had water in it before.
I know, Joe was here today, he said that, is it Saturday? Well, Saturday, didn't name Saturday, right? Saturday, we had seventy-eight thousand gallons go through there, down at the meter. Sunday, we had over three hundred thousand gallons, and then this morning he went down and checked it and he said, before you get down there, you can hear the water rushing, and then he says, now, almost another three hundred and ten thousand gallons. So, there was a lot of water.
What's the capacity?
Definitely not, I mean, it'll handle that right away, but what that means is, after this other sewer project is all done, because the water, our ground, the water's so high, you know, the ground, the groundwater, is it's going to find someplace to go, and if it doesn't run in those tubes, then it's going to run, events is going to cut a path and run next to them and to get down there, so eventually the problem is, is, he said probably the next ten years, you know, we're going to have to go to another lagoon to handle the water, because there's, there, I mean, that's, we're going to, it's just probably inevitable, but that will be for another mayor besides me. I don't plan on being here in this position for ten years, so, but, but that's, so, that's, but that is it. We will address that before spring, okay? We will contact those people, especially those that...
Because it comes spring and the skin is going to be out, and I'm here to do it. I'll have the health department out here if I've got water standing in my yard like any other...
And I know, and Ken, you talked to me, I'm possibly looking at some inexpensive way to handle our stormwater, storm sewers or something.
Probably not going to get that done.
I'm not going to, anyway. And I don't, you've seen, Michael, what's Michael's last name?
Shane, uh, Mitchell.
Mitchell, so he's going to be, he's going to be our liaison with Frenchman and Giraffe, so you've got the right last name, doesn't any bother you?
No, the Mitchell guy.
Yeah, so, so, alright, any other old business?
Yeah, I always wondered, has our police officer got his training up to date?
Now, that's an issue that we're not going to address tonight, but it will be addressed in the very near future as far as that goes. We sent out, I, I talked to the ILIA, Iowa, Iowa Law Enforcement Academy and some places to find out exactly where he is as far as some of those things go, and some other things, but yeah, that's...
That was supposed to be a better...
Yeah, yes.
Eight months ago.
Yeah, the, and the sheriff approached me also talking about that, the possibility of providing some sort of patrol out here on a regular basis, and I said, well, we're not to that point yet, but we'll see. Okay, any, any other old business?
Property that has burned, we were waiting to have a property transfer.
I don't know, I, we're not got the paperwork yet saying that it's on our side, but, but now, Janey told me that there's a light on in the basement and that one of us...
And what is theirs.
So, and Dave said that someone had knocked the door down, so I don't know who it is, we need to go by probably first thing in the morning, I'll get in, we'll go down there, make sure that there's nobody going on, pull the breaker or something.
That was one thing that we were supposed to do, oh, I forgot to mention, the insurance mentioned that we needed to, like, put no trespassing tape or something on, I think we forgot to kind of talk about that.
They screwed the doors closed, and stuff too, but yes.
But they're talking about the burnt house, and the lights are on in the burnt house.
It goes to that. And it was abandoned too.
It is abandoned too, but the lights are still on.
Well, we're, we're not, but somebody, I guess...
But we need to take both of the houses on.
Okay, any other old business?
Did you have any more conversation with that man about tearing up?
I have not, but I'm sure it's not going to happen until spring, but I will be in contact with him if I have to set a date to find out what he would have got for you.
See, I offered to furnish a dumpster for the shingles so he wasn't...
Responsible for that, because that's a big deal.
And, but the small amount, he said, take care of, and I said, well, let me know what the dump fee is and I'll pay for it.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll be, I'll make sure I get a text from you in this week, or if that goes. If I can't find this number in my phone.
I've probably got it on.
Yeah, I saved it under something, I remember, but it was something odd, so I put behind his name what it was for. Alright, any other old business? Any new business? Alright, we need to square in our new officers, and so, alright, you can just do there at your seat. Well, you know how the oath goes, it says, aye, Bill Hinshaw, only, we're all going to say our name at the same time, so we're not going to do this one time. So I guess we need to stand, raise a right hand for those who are being sworn in. Where are the steps we'll be sworn at?
Aye.
Aye, aye, Bill Hinshaw.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of...
Discharge all duties of the office of mayor.
County council.
Of Blakesburg.
Of Blakesburg.
In Walco County.
In Walco County.
Iowa, as for now or hereafter, required by law.
As for now or hereafter, required by law. Thank you, ma'am.
That's lovely, can I now hear a round of happy birthday?
She's going to sign these, so everybody have a copy. Want to thank Larry for his service, appreciate his input on some things and thank you. Trust that your health gets improved and continues to improve.
Well, hopefully on the twenty-ninth, we'll be making a step towards that.
Maybe there's more progress, but yes, we appreciate that. Alright, if there's nothing else, I would make a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. I'll make the motion or adjourn. Alright, made by Chisholm, second by Howell, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries, four ayes, no nays, thank you, meeting dismissed.